We started at 5:45. We had a brief executive session. Now we're ready to move back into open session. So the first item on our agenda is Plimpton School Committee regarding school update and dog policy. So John, did you want to take the lead on this? John Willamson?
Yeah, I do. I apologize. I'm having problems with my camera here. It seems to do this every time I do it, so. Give me just a sec. One more time.
There you go.
Not the best view, not the right camera, but.
It's you.
I have to deal with it. All right, there we go. Life's full of wonderful surprises. Okay. Couple things. One, we wanted to. We sort of couple different things that we're hoping to talk to. One is I want to talk about the vote that we took at the school committee regarding dogs being on the grounds of the Denne. And then, once we get through that, we'll also want to give you sort of an update from a budget perspective, since it's budget season and we will be coming, we'll be coming, you know, to town meeting. We want to give you sort of a preview of that. And Jason has also joined and he can give just a brief update when we finally get to that point of what's going on the Silver Lake side for both. Both Denne and Silver Lake, we have some pretty good news on those fronts, so we'll get to that. But at the school committee meeting just a couple of weeks ago, we were asked by a resident to, to have a discussion regarding the dogs at the Denne. And this was prompted by an episode that happened up there at the end of February, where this resident was bitten twice by a dog that was, that was up there with a couple of other dogs. And the other piece to this issue is that we have been talking about this issue about people picking up after their dogs for about a year and have attempted to do some, attempted to do some additional education that the dogs are required, or that owners are required to pick up after their dogs. And we even put out, you know, the little baggies for that. I love the fact that we have to get down to this and talk about this anyways, here we are. And so we did put those, we did put those out and we've had regular check-ins with that. And it unfortunately doesn't seem to have had any impact. Because when Paze went up to do their opening of the fields and get things ready for the soccer program this spring, nothing had changed. So we had that along with the issues brought to us about the resident being, being bitten. Additionally, there was a concern raised that a couple of weeks after that incident, there was use of the playground. And of course, now we have a brand new playground up there, which means we have a lot more parents and kids up using that space than we did pre-playground. But that, you know, they were there using the playground with their children and an unaccompanied dog came around the back of the building and was there. So, you know, we have this increased issue with respect to using the space and really health and safety issues from this perspective. We were also told, and I validated that today, that there have been issues with kids bringing in dog poop on their shoes, bringing it into the rugs, having the rugs cleaned, having to send the student out to, up to the nurse to get cleaned up, and taking time away from their learning and so on and so forth. And it's become an increasing problem. I did talk to Paze as well about where this has come from, and it seems to be a COVID thing. Because we have not ever, in my time on the school committee, had to, had to have this discussion. It started last, last year. So, long story short, after the discussion, hearing from the resident, hearing from, from Paze, the school committee took the vote to no longer allow dogs on Denne grounds. We're moving ahead with getting signage for that to make that clear. And part of the reason I wanted to bring it up here tonight was one to see if you had any questions, but also to enlist some support from the selectmen and perhaps the police to, you know, help encourage residents to do the right thing and follow the rules. So I'll, I'll stop there and see where we want to go.
John Traynor, Mark Russo, did you have anything you wanted to ask or add?
Yeah, I've been contacted by a few people too, who were negative on the idea of no dogs on the school grounds. A couple of the points that they made, I thought, had a certain validity. First of all, why couldn't we have the dogs leashed on school grounds? I know we don't have a leash law, but at least that might solve a little piece of it. The other concern one had was seniors can't use Churchill Park easy. Both from a, because that was the idea, you could, why not just go down to Churchill Park? You can walk your dog in there, there's plenty of space, et cetera. But it's up and down, there's lots of roots on the trail. And seniors have, and this comes back through the Council on Aging too, not around dogs, but just, they'd like a place to walk. I think it's valid somewhat. I do think the long-term solution is we're going to have to have some sort of a dog park, probably in Jason, Harry Jason Park or something like that, that people are able to walk their dogs, it's level ground, et cetera. But in the interim, I understand why the school committee made their choice and, you know, I talked to the lady who was bitten and I understand where she's coming from, because she was bitten twice same day and that, you know, we can't have that happening. We can't have kids tracking poop on their shoes and things like that. Paze has been very clear that they're constantly picking up and they don't feel that's what they're volunteering for. So mixed emotions, but that's what I've heard.
Mark, what about you?
Well, I think of all the issues that come up for the selectmen that I fear the most, it's dog issues and in part because of my profession and in much of my recreation, I, I'm really disappointed this was necessary. I fully acknowledge the challenge for the school committee to make this decision. I, I think there is this, this balancing of privilege and need and I, it's one more example that abuse of privilege takes away a lot of freedom for everyone. So I, I, I'm sorry it was necessary. I understand why the school committee is doing and, and for the moment, I think this is what we're stuck with.
All right, and I agree. I said that this is a gathering place for children. And I think we do down the road need some place for, for dogs. I do understand the need for a flat space, but I agree with what Mark said is that the privilege has been abused. People haven't cleaned up after their dogs. There are many viruses and different parasites that can be transmitted to humans through feces. And I just think that you've done the right thing here and, and banning the dogs from the, the property. And I don't think a leash is going to make a difference. I mean, most people, I think, John, take their dogs there because they can just let them run. I don't think they want to take them there on a leash. They're probably going inside a gated area. And I think that, you know, we need to look at addressing a safe place for, for people to walk their dogs. And, and maybe that needs to be a focus for next year, but it, I just don't think, it should be at the Denne, especially with the new playground. Not everybody likes dogs. Some kids are afraid of dogs. And this needs to be a kid-friendly, family-safe place where they're not having to worry about interacting with dogs. That's just my two cents. Art, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, I do. I, I had a conversation with John over the weekend and I reminded him that this is Plimpton. It's not the People's Republic of Cambridge. My wife went to watch our little four-year-old granddaughter at the Denne play soccer yesterday morning. And she said, well, I'd like to bring the dog. Now, we have a golden retriever. And she sits on, we sit on the, on the bench with a leash on our golden and we enjoy watching the grandkids play soccer. Now, I feel I have skin in the game because I've done the ratios of the town budget versus the Denne budget. And I contribute over $3,000 a year towards that school. So I think I have some skin in the game. We're also in our seventies and we love our pet. We, they're always on leash. And I don't see why people like that should be penalized for who knows what. And I said to John, can you be certain that it's not coyote scat? That it's not a wolf or something else? I mean, what's going in there at 1:00 in the morning? I hear the coyotes out in the woods. I, I don't know. But I did say to John, if you're having problems, I said, then you get, get the name of the offender and give it to me. I'll go have a talk with them. And then we'll straighten this thing out. But you get to the root of the, the problem. You don't, you don't condemn everybody. And, and certainly, Colleen and I are not offenders, but we do like to take our dogs down in the, in the, in the nice spring weather and the fall and watch our grandkids. We got three of them at the Denne. Or two right now, one more hidden there. We enjoy that. It's just not fair to us. And, and we pay a lot of taxes in this town. And all, and Colleen, when she left the other day, Sunday morning, she said, what if somebody says something to me? I says, then you tell them to arrest you. I said, you know what? Because it's a civil infraction and the police can do nothing about it. And I talked with Chief Hoffman today and he said, yep, you're right. Just like, just like the stickers on the back of the transfer, for the transfer station, it's a civil issue, not a police issue. Yeah, hold on. If I could put Colleen on for a second, hold on.
What about the ball field at the Denne School? Can I take my dog there when I go watch their baseball game?
You mean the townhouse?
At the townhouse. I mean, at the townhouse.
The.
Is that going to be condemned too?
I have no idea. I have no, I have no authority over, over the ball field at the townhouse.
Well, if you do it at one place, it should be consistent, if it's for the sake of the kid.
No, it's not. It's, that's, that's not it. This is about what's going on at the Denne. And the Denne is under the purview of the school committee. And something that we've been talking about for over a year, trying to get people to pick up after their dogs. In fact, when I was walking out there with Mr. Benito to look at, we're replacing signs, right under two of the signs that says, pick up after your dog was.
Oh yeah, you have dog poop bags there too. And when I've been there, I have not seen anybody with, at the games without a dog on the leash. And I'm there, I was there Saturday and I was there Sunday. And I did not.
That's not the issue. The issue is, is that there's still dog feces on the fields and that we have it being brought into the school. And we did not jump to do this decision. This has been on our agenda for over, for a year. We started talking about this last April and we took an incremental approach. And I would be great if I could find out who the offenders were. But I can't spend my whole weekends up there waiting for people when there aren't games to see what they are or aren't doing.
Well, with no leash law, John, I can't see that you can say it's the people who bring their dogs. Because with no leash law, there can be any dog, even after this, there can be many dogs there.
That's not, that's not been our experience. And what I have witnessed when I have been up there on the weekends to drop off or check on something, there have been folks up there, not during games, on other times with their dogs off-leash running around. And I have an issue that I have to deal with, both health and safety, and especially with the new playground up there. And I can't believe I did this, but I followed up on Art's question about whether it was coyote scat, and it is not, because I looked at lots of pictures of that this afternoon, which I never thought I would look up, but there we go. It is very different. And, and it is people, and I, I feel bad. I have friends who take their dogs up there and clean up after them, and they're not happy with me either, if that makes anyone feel better. But the basic fact is, is I have to look at the issues that are in front of us. And that's the policy we make. If people choose not to obey that, that's going to be a separate issue. But the school committee does have the ability to enact policy for the school grounds.
So how are you going to prevent people from going up there at night when there's no game? And having their dogs loose?
You know what, Colleen, that's going to be a selectman's issue. We're going to have to work on, with the school committee about enforcing them. This is, you know, I'm sorry that it's, it's come to this. I appreciate that you're responsible dog owners, but not everybody is. And this is a children's, an area for children, and it's become a dog dumping ground. And it's not fair to the kids that are playing up there and going to school there to have to watch out for dog crap when they're out on the fields playing soccer or any other games. So unfortunately, it's come to this. I fully support it. Sounds like John and Mark are on board too. We're going to have to work on coming up with some space for dogs, but it's not going to be at the Denne.
And, and one thing I would, I would note on that, we're going to be doing some additional work this weekend on Two Brooks. My hope is, is that by the time we get done with all of that, that will be, and, and John, I, I have my own troubles sometimes with, with Churchill going in there with all the roots that come up. But hopefully, the, the access to Two Brooks will be, at least for some folks, will be easier. And you have lots of space in there around the bogs and the field that's, that's in there, that hopefully that will provide some other avenues as well, where dogs will be able to have some off-leash time or safely, safe off-leash time to, to run.
And maybe.
Well, I tried to work with, excuse, I tried to work with Colleen Thompson a few years back when there was a grant, when Kingston was doing their dog park, but the problem resulted in the fact that we could have used Harry Jason Park for it, but no, nobody wanted to be responsible for cleaning it up and maintaining it.
Well, that is going to be a challenge when we get to that point.
But it's something.
We're not cleaning it up now.
No, we're not cleaning up now. And right, you're right.
Well, we're going to have to clean it up when we, if we have a dog park, we will have to take ownership of the whole thing. Where that lies, we'll figure out.
Let's get the dog park first, right?
Yeah, right. And, and while Two Brooks is, is great, but not everybody's dogs are, you know, can be off-leash and, and mined. And I think some people liked the fenced-in area. So, you know, we're just, this is something we need to, to look at going forward so that we're able to address the needs that people need to get out with their dogs. And I understand, I walk my dog every day and I love getting out in the fresh air and, and, and doing that. It's good for me, it's good for the dog. And, and I think we need to find a way to make this work for people that, that want to get out with their animals.
This is really unfortunate, so.
I agree. It sticks. No pun intended. All right, so Jason, did you want to add anything? We've got a couple of other people on the call.
I, I thought I would give you a quick update on Denne.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Jason can fill in on Silver Lake. Because my lead-in kind of helps explain his piece too. So the school budgets this year, it's really all a story of, of enrollment. So Denne, we had about a 20% increase in enrollment, which brings us up to, but I think, I think those last meeting, we had 242 students. We were down around 200. So that's a big increase. And we're expecting another large, both the kindergarten and first grade classes are about 40 kids apiece. And we're expecting another class just like that coming in. So that ends up with having some, that obviously impacts our shared cost part of our budget. So the, anything that, any of the costs that, that we're using is from a district perspective, show up in our budget as a shared cost. So, so we have some increases there. And the other thing that we've included in the budget for next year is a new position, called Coordinator of Student Support. And this is a hybrid position we've created in order to, to, to do a number of things. One, one is to provide for additional staffing from a, from a counseling perspective. Right now, from the administration, you know, in the building on a regular basis is Mr. Benito as the principal and Christine Markelini as the school psychologist. That's it. And so if, you know, and Christine is busy at all times. We also have issues because of COVID, both with, you know, behavior and, and adjustment and social, social engagement. But we also have issues that you have students that, that are needing some additional care, some additional counseling. And there's an enormous shortage right now in counselors, to the point that it can be eight to 10 months waiting list to even get to see a counselor, if that counselor even ends up being right for that student. So we're seeing an absolute significant need. We've seen a significant increase in the demands on Christine. And we also think that this position will allow us to be able to get involved in any potential issues early on. And thus prevent the issues from becoming bigger issues that need to be dealt with at a later point. And so looking at the overall needs for the building, especially with the increase in number of students that we have there, that is part of the budget for this year. On the, on the plus side, we've had, we have, we have increased savings in the special education line, which will help out. But also from an enrollment perspective, we have in the, in the governor's budget, a significant increase to our Chapter 70 funds, roughly about 18.3%. And what all of that means, when we get down to the, to the, to the bottom line, is that we should have a rough, roughly a zero budget for Denne, as far as a zero budget increase for Denne going into town meeting. Because the additional funds from the special education will offset some of the increases, the increase that we, certainly the increase that we have for the new position, but also some of the other increased costs that we have. One of these places where it seems like the, like the plan actually worked out the way it's supposed to. The other piece to understand is that with, with Chapter 70 monies, and Jason can correct me if I get this wrong, but is that we're, we're held harmless? So if the Denne were to drop significantly in its enrollment, which not, we're expecting that, our number next year is not going to go down. It won't go up, but it isn't going to go down. And so it's, it's not like this money shows up this year, it helps to pay, helps to offset the cost of this position. And then next year it disappears. That's not how that works. So that's the good news from the Denne standpoint, is that we're able to submit not just a level-funded budget, but a zero increase budget and be able to still take care of the needs for the students. So are there any questions with respect to Denne? Kind of hard to have questions when it's zero increase, right? That's, it just doesn't normally happen. So on the other scale of things that don't normally happen, Jason, are you able to, to give a quick update on Silver Lake?
Absolutely. If you could let me know if you can hear me, all right?
That's good.
All right, great. So Silver Lake bases its assessments for FY '23 off our October 1 enrollments. And we just enrolled our smallest class from Denne ever in the seventh grade of Silver Lake, which resulted in us having a negative assessment for the year. Plimpton's share for Silver Lake is actually going to be $187,000 less than last year, even with the increase to this year's budget overall at the Silver Lake level. So that's the good news that I bring with you today for, for Silver Lake. But it's a cautionary tale. We know that assessments are a roller coaster. And some years, even when Silver Lake brings in a very reasonable budget, we can see here locally, five, six, seven percent increases just because of the difference in enrollments and the difference in how the Department of Revenue is judging our town's ability to pay. So I am working currently with Rep. Landra's office to come up with a regional school assessment stabilization fund. We're trying to fit it in with the Mass Municipal. Max of 2016. To have similar language, I believe, this fund's totally in the control of town meetings and the select boards of the towns, not in the Silver Lake Regional School Committees. To be able to put aside monies, for example, this year, when we have $187,000 savings at town meeting, we could put a portion of that money aside to go towards future assessments that would be, you know, above the two and a half, three and a half percent that, you know, we can generally tolerate at home. So this is something that Kathy's office and I were working on together with MASC, because we know that this roller coaster is going to continue. But this year, we just happened to be in one of those dips instead of at the crest of the wave.
Jason, is this a different stabilization account than is on the warrant proposed by Silver Lake?
That's correct. The stabilization that's proposed by Silver Lake this year would be just to create a stabilization fund for capital expenses. This is what we've been working on diligently with the three towns over the course of this school year. We've had several tri-town meetings. I know you've been at some of them, John's been some of them, from the perspective of the capital plan for the town. So yes, this would be a completely different funding mechanism and it would be used just for the towns to deal with those fluctuations and assessments. Whereas the one that we're creating, hopefully a town meeting this year, would be for the towns to help Silver Lake manage the capital expenses once we exhausted the E and D route that we've been using with the blessing of the towns for the past six years.
Christine, I think of it as akin to the, to the special ed stabilization account that we established a few years back. And we're putting our, we're putting whatever we can in there to help us for the time. We've been very lucky that we, we keep having surpluses there and that's, that's great news. But we will have some money, we think we have $50,000 and change in there to help offset if we have a year where the budget, particularly the budget jumps up intra-year. And we, we get presented with that. This would be a similar thing where you have, where you have a negative year, because it's just not, it's not a normal thing unless Kingston is like growing by leaps and bounds with their enrollment. We're not normally going to have negative years, but you may have a year where we have that, that difference like this, where you could say, well, look, we're going to take some of the savings, but we're going to plan prudently for the future and put some of that aside so that the year when it's a 5% increase, all because of enrollment changes. And we're going to see some of that happening in not-too-distant future because we have two classes left that are smaller, not as small as our 16-kid class, but, you know, are the 23 or 25 range. And then they're all 40. And so when that starts to push back into the high school and then in six years, when that six, that class of 16 falls off and gets replaced by a class of 40, you're going to see that same opposite side of that wave. And so it's just something that I, that Jason is, is working on. It's not something that we have now, unfortunately. But, you know, so down the road, we might be able to use that as another tool that we can help to smooth things a little bit.
So Jason, this is something you'd have to bring to town meeting next year?
No, this is something that right now, we would have to get passed by the legislature. So we're drafting the legislation right now. And it would have to go to committee and then hopefully we get a favorable, favorable review out of committee and then be voted by the legislature. So this is not something I anticipate us even having the ability to step towards at next year's town meeting. But hopefully in the near future, this is work that I've been doing since Senator Kennedy was our senator. And yep, it, you know, government, sometimes things take time. But regional schools make up less than 27% of the school districts in Massachusetts. So trying to get support from other communities that don't understand the unique nature of what a town assessment looks like and how it can so wildly fluctuate, even when the school, you know, department brings in a very reasonable budget. You know, it's been a long road to just onboard some of those other communities to support this legislation.
Jason, let us know what we can do to help, you know, if if it's something that we can help with down the road.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. John, did you have anything else you wanted to bring forward?
That's it for tonight.
All right, anybody on the call that had any questions for John or Jason? All right, seeing no hands, hearing no voices. All right. Thank you both so much for your update. Greatly appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll be working closely together on the issues going forward. I'm sure we'll be uh working closely together on um the issues um going forward. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So next item on the agenda is use of the old townhouse. We had the um Plymouth yoga, or I'm sorry, meditation group that is interested in using the old townhouse and I believe Bree, um, if you wanted to chime in, you reached out to um Heather, I believe, from Cultural Council and they were interested in sponsoring this event.
Yes, they were. I haven't heard back from her.
Okay.
Yes, they would be interested in um representing them.
Okay.
Having them go and we have Zumba go through the COA. So they would do this meditation class.
Great. Thank you, Bree.
Sponsor, I should say. Thank you.
All right. Marker, John?
Go ahead, Mark.
Uh, so I, have we heard anything more about insurance from town council or from our insurance carrier?
Yeah, Bree sent another inquiry. I sent Greg something um as did Bree. I think that they're busy right now reviewing our town meeting warrants. Um, but that said, they were helpful to us in the past with giving us the appropriate waiver forms for various activities and everything. So I think as long as groups are signing the waiver um for this particular one, I don't see any harm in approving it even conditionally, maybe temporarily and seeing how it goes for ninety days or something like that.
I, I totally agree with that. I, I think the same thing I said last time is there are only two separate issues. This particular group um use and we still have work to do, I think, on defining guidance on making decisions, but while we continue to work on that, I'd be very much in favor of the um meditation group having a chance to get started. Maybe that's an opportunity to see what other guidances we're going to have to come up with. So I would hope we could vote tonight to approve um uh the meditation group's use provisionally. Let's say for six or eight weeks is a starting point.
John, what you have?
I, I'm okay with that. Um. I do think we do need a process that tells people exactly what they need to have in place when they come to us for use of it, of the hall. And I think the sooner we can get that accomplished, the better.
Is the, the building ready for occupancy now? With the remediation that's been done?
The fitness group is using it now.
Okay.
Uh, the chair works, so you get from the
Awesome.
Yeah.
I wouldn't use the back room, but little, little back room is just to studs, but
Yep.
The door is closed. No one needs to use it.
We do, we do need to figure out a lock system and that's going to take wifi. You know, we had a problem last week where if door was open, lights were on. And it gets troubling to know who's doing what over there. Because a lot of people have the uh the code that allows you into the building.
And actually, I, this is another one. It's a little bit the same theme as the, the school and, and the dogs. I, it's kind of a privilege um to be able to use this place and it just, I, people are just going to have to be really conscious of what's going on, or this will be another one that they're going to lose a privilege along the way.
We've been saying that, Mark, for, you know.
I know. I agree. And I, and, and I, I, I agree. We gotta, we gotta do something different because it isn't working so far.
Yeah. I don't believe the endpoint is to lock it down. I believe we fix it so we know who's in there. And then we make a decision on each person as they come forward.
Yeah. And so I think we can, um, I think one of the first steps, and we've already talked about doing this as part of the part of the work that we do to uh uh reestablish the envelope of the building, particularly in the back room. Because it's, it's this water infiltration and stuff. So as we do that, part of that um estimate, we had asked about putting in uh, you know, electronic deadbolt to that door. And then we can, if we get that in there, then we can worry about the wifi and at least that instance, you know, we'll be able to better control. But if you're able to hook that up to wifi, the benefit is, is you can give different codes to different people.
Exactly.
When they come in and you, and the way the deadbolt will work too is you got, you gotta put the code in when you come in, you put the code in when you leave. So you'll be able to see who came and went. And if, if, you know, and, and that person's responsible for the, for the locking of the door. And that will at least give some more accountability to it. From a, you know, from an electronic perspective, it also, I believe for some of these, you can then also lock it. So if you check on it and you see it's unlocked and it's nine thirty at night, you can press a button on the phone and it will
Yep.
It will lock the deadbolt.
And it's going to cost us a little money, but I think it's well worth it to save that building. It's a gorgeous building.
And you could do some of that too with the, with the switches. So if, you know, if we regularly have a problem with the main lights being on or the hallway lights, you can hook up some of those switches, the smart switches, and then be able to see that they're on.
Liz has already got the green community, so that they've done that, as I understand.
They've done some of the work, but we need the wifi to bring it all to life. Um, did you want to take a vote for the meditation person? Because I know that she's been kind of waiting anxiously to hear about her application.
Yeah, I think we're ready to take a vote. So Mark, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve uh Siobhan Green's um uh request to uh use the old townhouse for a weekly meditation group. Um, that it's a provisional, uh, let's say over the next two months.
I'll second.
All right. Uh, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes.
Um, one, one more Chris, Chris thing, Christine. I, after we've heard from town council a little bit more on legal issues and, and especially after we're closer to having this electronic solution to the door. I think we need to put together a draft document um in, in terms of guidance of how we're going to decide about requests and then work off that document so that we can move this forward. So we're not just kind of stumbling over this over and over again. Um.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. And then Liz, uh, or Bree, you'll find out about the insurance?
Yes, I will find that out. Um, I'm, the waiver should be fine. Oh, part of the thing is, I know the code for the door.
Yeah.
It's like another one of those, when I changed the key to the door of the townhouse, because it had to be, I think, at one point it was eighty keys out there. Can the code to the old townhouse just be changed and it will limit it?
We can change it, but who's gonna, how you gonna? How are you gonna know who's, who deserves it?
From, from an electronic perspective, if they're set up correctly and we get the right thing, you, you can at any point, you can go and wipe everyone. And then you can, it's a, it's the same type of thing moving to from keys to, you know, key fobs or badge access to even the townhouse. You know, you, you can take away access at any point in time. You can lock the whole thing down and you can wipe it clean and you can start over. Um, which is, you know, if you think about how much you're spending on keys when you periodically redoing that, you're probably going to pay for the system in the first year.
Right. But when is this going to be happening? Where it's got the, the key code now? I'm saying just for now, can that be changed until you get something in place that's electronic?
Well, Bree, if you want to start a list.
The, the code, the code for the lock box?
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yep.
You, you are able to change those codes. I'm sure the instructions for this particular box are nowhere to be found.
Right. But before we do that, I'd like to see a list of all the names that are then going to be allowed to the new code to make sure we don't miss anybody.
Which is the, the Zumba instructor should have it.
Well, the fitness group oftentimes is there before the lady.
Why don't we work on maybe putting together a list before we go and change the code?
Right.
Because we still have like vendors going there and stuff and we don't want them to not have it. Um, I think we should, I think we're kind of mixing two different discussions.
Well, the only reason I'm saying this is because the front door was left open. And there's a sign that's been put on the front door that says emergency exit only. So somebody's still going out that door and they're not shutting it. And it's, it's, it's really easy. If the wind had blown that door with a timer that she went to open it and it's just pulled right open was not. The back door with the hook and eye, that was left open.
I mean, what?
There's all sorts of doors are being left open in addition to light.
Why are they even using that door? It's like, it's like
I have no idea, John. I even made signs and put them on them.
Well, you don't even know who's in there. That's part of the problem. I mean, the, the first shoe to drop is, well, it must be the fitness group. But in fact, you go by there and there's cars, different cars there and you know, you don't know who's in there.
That's what I mean about changing the thing for now. The Zim, the Zumba people should have it most definitely.
Plymouth, the historical society.
I'm just trying to help you.
Yeah, sounds like we, this is stuff that would need to be in the policy document that we're, work on. Okay. All right. Thank you, Bree, very much for sharing that. Okay. Um, any more discussion on um use of the old town or the old townhouse? We made a motion that they are provisionally authorized to use it. Okay, next item, regional dispatch, rock draft contract discussion. Liz, you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So this is more of a placeholder. Um, the fire chief and I are actually meeting with them tomorrow to discuss the contract and the cost. Um, so I should be able to report back after that meeting and um hoping we can get them down from the two hundred thousand dollar number.
That is a great plan.
Back, can I rant for, I, I do my rant part right now?
You, you take your rant, Mark. You rant.
So two sentences on this, and we had a big, long discussion. We know all those pieces, but I, I if much of the fee that we're being charged is based on use, um, it is absolutely insane that the citizens of this town should be paying three times as much um for the dispatch services, citizens of other towns. Um. Uh, as simple as that.
Is that, is that where the numbers came out?
Yeah.
Which, which is what we thought, right?
I mean, a town of three thousand is being asked to pay the exact same two hundred thousand that a town of eight thousand and a town of fourteen thousand. This just makes no sense. Okay, that's my rant there. I feel better.
Do you feel better? Good. Okay, very good. All right. Thanks, Liz. And um, that's great that you guys are meeting with them and hopefully uh you have a productive discussion where they're um they're willing to put their money where their mouth was because they sounded like they were a little bit flexible when we met with them last time. So hopefully they um are able to uh follow through with that. All right, uh, town meeting preparations. Do you want to take this one too, Liz?
Sure. So the draft annual and special town meeting warrants are now with town council for review. And we will have those edits back in time to get them into the final documents. The board's votes for recommendation on April twenty fifth.
Thank you, Liz. All right. Discussion regarding uh the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrant articles.
Um, so Mark had mentioned having this on as its own placeholder in case there was any particular discussion or questions that um any board members had regarding articles. That said, I know that we did our joint meeting with finance committee last week. Um, and went through everything pretty much, but we thought it was still good to have this placeholder in case any questions or concerns.
John, I don't know if you want to talk about what we've got planned for the uh feasibility uh presentation over the next couple of weeks.
Are you going to make me remember dates?
I can do the dates if you want, then again.
Um, uh, so we're, uh, I will be at the, I'll be at the library on Saturday giving a very high level overview of uh sort of what the articles are uh at town meeting for town properties as well as feasibility. Not, this is going to be very high level. I got, I got ten minutes or less to do it. So clearly I'm not going to get too much into too much detail. Uh, the following Saturday at the townhouse, we are planning to do an in-person uh review. Uh, we'll have uh a nice big slide deck. Uh, we'll go through each of the, each of the articles. We'll go through work that we've already done. Uh, we'll go through the work that we're working on right now and what we're planning to bring to town meeting. And some of the work that we're, that we're looking at uh in the future as well. And then we will spend some uh specific time dedicated to feasibility study. What's going to be gotten by that, uh, why we're doing it and so on and so forth. So that's, that's for the Saturday, the twenty-third. Uh, and then I believe we said for May fourth.
May third, I think.
May third?
Yep.
Okay. I'll pull that up just to make sure.
Check and make sure.
Wednesday, uh, what, first Wednesday in May, we'll say that.
Yeah.
Because that's your May fourth, huh? I am still on, even, and even had to go to Boston today for work. Um, so May fourth, we will do a Zoom session uh at six P M. Uh, and we'll notice that it will be part of, it'll be the first part of our regular meeting uh on the fourth of May, but that way if folks couldn't attend, um, couldn't attend on the twenty-third in person or prefer to attend virtually, we will have that session available. It will be a repeat basically of the session on the twenty-third. So hopefully that will give folks an opportunity to understand the work that we're doing from a town properties perspective, but also to ask any additional questions that they have with respect to any, any one of those items.
You muted, Christine.
Oops. Anything more on um the annual town meeting or special town meeting warrant articles?
So I, I, I don't know fully if this is appropriate or not, but in a couple of weeks we'll have to vote along with the finance committee. I suppose I'm wondering if there are any articles that any of us are stumbling upon or concerned about or things that we might want to discuss uh tonight and or um issues to raise that are food for thought between now and the next meeting.
I have a couple of questions, but they're not warrant articles. They're actually budget lines. Where um I was um a little concerned about both the fire and um the um police budget lines.
Uh, Liz, I don't know if you want to mention, we, we had a discussion with, go ahead.
I'm just a little hesitant. It's not on, um, well, I guess technically the budget is article four, is it? On the annual town meeting. So the fire department, um, very long story short, there were initial concerns with their budget submission. Um, I helped the chief redo the submission. And our numbers shook out at six hundred thousand needed for fire and EMS salaries. Um, there might be a tiny bit of wiggle room there if we were a bit generous with overtime. Um, but that said, I would plan on right around six hundred thousand necessary for them um to keep that department functioning optimally um for all of fiscal twenty-three. Um, and that is them running full throttle with people in normal slots on the schedule. So that seems to be what's required to get that done. Um, as far as the police department goes, they requested funding um roughly, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but roughly seventy-five thousand more than their current year's budget to take into consideration funding another additional officer. The finance committee expressed some concerns at their meeting last week um about funding their request in whole. Because a, one of our former interim chiefs, um, for a variety of reasons chose not to fill the position that was funded last year. Um, so they, I think, wanted to sort of see how it went before fully funding their their request for this additional officer. Um, that said, we're going to have a new chief at the helm. And given our current staffing levels and absolutely needing to and given our current staffing levels and absolutely needing to avoid a situation where people are on patrol alone on a midnight shift, which I think should really be unacceptable by any community standards. I think that we should strongly consider advocating for them and fully funding them at the amount that they requested so that they can be properly staffed. So that was sort of how those things shook out. We can have more of a discussion on the 25th about funding everything. Our ambulance fund is doing fine. It is very healthy and it's roughly kind of where it was around this time last year, even though last year we took 340,000 out to purchase the new ambulance. So another thing I think that people should consider for fiscal '23, instead of what we've done in several years past of taking 200,000 from the ambulance fund to kind of supplement fire and EMS, I'm wondering if you should maybe consider a higher amount just for fiscal '23. You don't have to set precedent with it or anything like that, but maybe just a one-time thing to help supplement that. It would help reduce the reason appropriate number overall. Maybe you consider 250,000 or even up to 300,000. And the fund, the current balance in the sort of trajectory as you look ahead would support that. So that's another kind of tool in the toolkit to discuss when we go over all the funding sources and the motions.
We did go over this with the fire chief today and I'm very supportive of the 250,000. I think that would work and I think it would make him basically whole.
And then would that free up some funding for police then? If we're taking some of the money that is going towards fire in, in supplementing it with more ambulance funding?
No, because.
Not, not directly. So the money from the ambulance fund would be direct to supplement the fire and EMS. However, as a general premise, it's less money that you're raising and appropriating. Because when we came up with our target number, we assumed fully funding both police and fire. Police at what they asked for and fire at the 600,000 after I helped them redo the budget. So it would in turn have a positive benefit as far as getting us closer to that target number. It would be less money to have to raise and appropriate. But it's not a direct.
Correct, right.
The other, the other side of that is if the finance committee didn't agree, it came in with a much lower number, would put the fire department at risk in terms of being able to live within their budget. So that's why we think taking it from the ambulance since we're building a fairly good cushion makes sense.
Well, and I think that that's important. We've, you know, the chief reminded John and I of something today that I think everyone's kind of lost sight of. His budget, when he took the position about a year after I came on board, he inherited some of the current structure. They used to have a firefighter EMT. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I want to say he was factored in at maybe 16 hours a week for administrative work and then was on the part-time payroll. We brought him on board full-time, but we eliminated the administrative line. And I think that maybe something got lost in translation there because it was the chief's first year. You know, he'd been on the job for maybe a month and a half and then he was in budget prep mode. And I think something may have got lost there as far as that administrative piece and kind of what the assumptions were. John and I worked that out with him. So everybody will be present and accounted for and scheduled normally. We're able to work around that and everything. But I think to a certain extent, he's been playing catch-up every year. And it would be nice to fund them, you know, and what they need to, to function, for the department to function as it should and give him a budget that he can actually work with and live within. I don't think that their initial request was that necessarily, but after sitting with him and refining the numbers, that $600,000 number keeps being where we come back to.
Great. Thank you, Liz. John or Mark, anything to add?
I, I, I would only underscore what you said about the police in our meeting with FinCom. I think that went actually surprisingly well, but the one area that concerned me, new police chief coming on and maybe a bare bones budget that certainly wouldn't be extravagant to come in at the level they requested. So I, I also would kind of be in favor of a, a little bit more liberal funding in that line.
Yeah, I would as well. I, it's always been a concern for me to have officers on over the, on the overnight shift by themselves. I don't think that's a, a safe setup, especially in today's climate where there's just so much hostility towards police. You know, that we're a small town, but bad things happen here too. And we don't live in a bubble. And I think that we need to staff appropriately so that our officers are safe or as safe as they possibly can be when they're out working on behalf of the town to protect our residents.
I agree wholeheartedly with that. I think what they've come forward is a budget we should support.
Okay, so Liz, no need to vote, but just a discussion of, or should we take a vote that we would ask them to take another look at it?
If you took a vote, and I mean, the budget is one of our articles on the annual town meeting warrant. So I think you're fine to take a vote in terms of, you know, what's on the agenda and everything. That might be helpful. Then I could forward that to the finance committee and let them know where you stand.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we, well, are we asking them or are we just telling them where, what, what we're recommending?
I would give them maybe your recommendation for the police salaries. If you're inclined to vote that and say that you support them and their, the amount requested. And then for the fire department, the refined number was 600,000.
Okay. All right. So, so moved that we're voting to support the, the police budget, the police department budget, what the salaries line, basically Liz, as, as requested and the fire budget, and that would once again be the salaries line?
Yes, that would require any MS salaries.
Salaries line at 600,000. Any discussion? All right, you ready to vote? So I've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, Mark. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Thank you, Liz, very much for your help with that.
I'll put something in writing for that and I'll get it to you, Christine, for, for signature and then I'll save it off.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. And then Bree, onto warrants paid. Thank you, Bree. $12,667.52?
Nope. $12,666.52.
Oh God, I wasn't even close. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Bree. All right, Liz, town administrators' updates.
So we have a few different grant applications in the works and we wrapped up review of our town buildings. So we are working hand in hand with Energy Source and Old Colony Planning Council on a new green communities grant application. So I expect to see that in final form, maybe over the next week or so. And then Bridgette has been taking the lead on getting pricing for some different building projects. So one of the considerations for ARPA funding potentially was replacing the generator at the townhouse that is severely outdated and fickle at best in terms of performance. So South Shore Generator rearranged for them to come out today and they were kind of looking at what we have and going to help us with some specifications and everything. It'll just give us an idea for pricing and everything. We'll still have to go through all the regular procurement processes that we normally would. But that will give us hopefully a solid estimate to look at when we're figuring out spending our ARPA funds. So more to come on that. We have a few things in correspondence. We did have a letter from the police department union regarding the police chief search and expressing their support for acting chief Daniel Hoffman. And then we also have under our standard kind of use of town property applications that we put in correspondence. We have two here. So we have one from the Plimpton Garden Club and they are seeking approval for May 21st, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Town Green. And they may have a bake table selling some prepackaged dessert items as well. So that's for their annual plant sale.
Excuse me, Liz?
Yeah?
The library, the library may join in on that and sell some books.
Okay. I can make a note on here.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then Bree had forwarded a letter from Art and Colleen Moran, also in support of Dan Hoffman as the, his acting chief. So we received that today in correspondence as well. So thank you for that. All right, anything else? Go ahead, Liz.
Did you want to vote on the garden club, the plant sale pending the sign-offs from the other departments?
Absolutely. All right. I'll, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Plimpton Garden Club to use the Town Green on May 21st from 8:00 to 1:00 for a plant sale and possible bake sale.
Second.
All right, second roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right. Thank you, Liz.
We have one more here too. We have approval being requested for a townwide cleanup with Plimpton Garden Club and Citizens Group. And this would be April 30th or May 1st. And they have parking at the townhouse available. And they might serve coffee and donuts. That's on here as a possibility. So I think they are seeking a vote of approval for that pending the other department's sign-offs.
All right. Oh, and did they give you any time? I think they started at like 8:00, don't they typically?
8:30.
8:30, okay. All right. So I'll make a motion. We authorize the, the town cleanup group and interested citizens to use the Town Green. That's where they set up and make the assignments on May 20, I'm sorry, April 30th. Sounds like what, May 1st is maybe a rain date?
That's what it looks like.
From 8:30 and till, they're usually wrapped up early afternoon.
I'm just one quick, did they want to use the Town Green or the townhouse?
I think they usually use the green. Townhouse is parking and they usually set up by the gazebo. Okay. All right. So we've got a motion, second, roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. Thank you, Liz. All right, anything else? All right. So we've got a couple of sets of minutes. We've got minutes from 3:28 and 4:06. Did everyone get a chance to read those?
I did on, on, March 28th, on the second page, it came out, Town Council, C-O-U-N-C-I-L rather than the other kind of council, twice. So that should get fixed.
Good catch. John, anything? Did you see anything?
Uh, let's see, and I think the 28 was when I left for a minute or techno, no, it was the next, you know, where it says JT was dropped from the Zoom call due to technical difficulties. Maybe you could just put in the line that I did come back.
Yeah, you returned for the vote on Liz, the contract.
Yep.
You were just gone for a short period of time.
His timing was awfully suspicious, though.
It was, it was.
Key vote. It could be the most important vote of, of the year.
Yeah.
I know she always turns her back on me whenever.
Yeah. I'm sorry. We've got a bad connection. All right. So motion to accept the minutes from 3:28 as amended with council and then John Trainer being added back into the meeting. All right. And roll call vote, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay, for the minutes on 4:06, this was our meeting with the finance committee. John, you had to leave to attend a town properties committee?
Yes.
Meeting? Yep. Okay. I'll make a motion to accept these as written. If a second. All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right. Upcoming meetings, we are interviewing the four police chief candidates on this Wednesday, 4:13. And Liz, those are in-person meetings, correct, at the townhouse in the Deborah Sampson Room?
That's in person, yes.
Okay, perfect. And those, those are posted meetings and they're open to the public as well. And then our next regular scheduled meeting will be 4:25 and then 5:09. So that's our, our next three meetings. All right, rants and raves. You already did a rant, Mark. Do you have a rave?
Yeah, sure. Small one. Town council Jonathan Eichman in executive session offered us such a clear, crisp, concise summary of the issues at hand. And it was just a pleasure to be working with that kind of lucidity. So I'm appreciative of that.
Yeah, that's true. We don't always get such clear advice from council. So that was, that was refreshing.
It's a backhanded compliment.
That's my specialty. Yeah. So my rave is, is John Trainer. And John, you're my rave for your Saturdays at the library. And I think for myself, I get caught up in it and I, I sometimes I don't think what we do is really all that interesting and anybody would, would care, but they do, residents do care. And there's obviously a need for communication and you're providing a very important service to residents with updates from activities, what we're working on, what Town Properties is working on. You've provided introductions for residents to meet some of our department heads and just a forum to discuss important issues facing the town. So thank you so much for doing that.
Well, thank you. I feel a glow coming on.
You don't have to, you don't have to give me a rave though.
So I'm not going to, Christine.
Don't, don't.
I do want to give a rave for Vicky Alberti and Stephanie Turan. They came forward at the last library speakers meeting. And it's nice to see the garden club reactivating. Stephanie was working with some of her people to have a flower show later in the sort of like early fall. And the two of them are working together. So I think that's great. That's part of the glue that makes Plimpton work and nice to see it happening again.
All right. Well, thank you all so much for attending. It's been a, a very informative and lively meeting. So thank you for hanging in there with us and I'll make a motion to adjourn until our next meeting on Wednesday. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Raise of hands, all in favor? Aye. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.